Good evening, council. I think I see four of us here, five of us here. Okay, this is the City Council Special Meeting, 6:30 PM on Monday, November 16th, 2020. And can we have the call? Lita or Mike?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Maltow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblyn.
Here.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
And Councilmember Kent Train.
Okay, great. Meeting accessibility. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, city website is www.samamish.us/tv21. You can also view it on YouTube or on the Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting on the city website, again at www.samamish.us/tv21, on YouTube or on Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. Pledge of Allegiance. Let's have Councilmember Stewart. You've got the cute flag there. How about starting us off with the pledge?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember. Next, we have the approval of the agenda, which is super easy.
So moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Great, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Great, hearing none is a 7-0. Okay, moving on to public comment. Public comment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. Written public comment will be accepted until 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Submit your written comments by email to the city clerk, lhatchey@samamish.us, and the city council at citycouncil@samamish.us. A verbal comment is up to three minutes. A verbal public comment may be provided per person live during the meeting. Call the following number and input the access code when prompted by 6:30 PM the day of the meeting. Phone number of 1-571-317-3122. Access code 929-348-197. Once you have joined, you will be placed on mute. The meeting operator will unmute you when it is your turn to comment. You will hear an automated voice say "unmuted" when that occurs, and the operator will ask you to begin your comment. If you would like to provide public comment on a public hearing, which we do not have this evening, so never mind that part. So how many do we have callers on for this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have no callers tonight for public comment. No callers.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so we are on to our business of the evening, which is budget. And who is going to start us off with that?
If I can just say, I'm getting texts from some folks that the audio doesn't seem to be working for folks at home trying to watch. They can hear us, but they can't see anything. Just to let you know.
Okay. Okay, are they not, is it they're not hearing City Hall?
Well, they can hear. I don't know what they're hearing. They're just saying there's no video or visual. There's just audio. I don't know if anybody's going to be presenting anything. There was nothing in the packet. But if something's going to be presented, the folks watching at home won't be able to see it.
I hear they're only seeing the opening screen of the Samamish City Hall sunset picture.
So Ken is hearing the same thing.
Okay. Okay. They should be seeing something different now. Okay. All right, so who is going to speak first?
Mayor, members of council, we have been working through a number of scenarios, as you'll recall, in these last regular and special meetings, to get to a point where council feels comfortable that they can weigh in on the budget. In fact, last week, we opened a public hearing on a couple of different areas of the budget, and we'll recap on that before we close out this evening. And tomorrow night, we have a second meeting to discuss what we have opened the hearing on, and depending upon council's decisions as to whether we close the public hearing and move on from there, with an adopted budget or other direction. Tonight is a study session. We had a number of additional questions come to us, and we've provided answers on those after meeting on Friday with a group of council. Mayor, you thought it best, and there was concurrence that we do this study session to try to allow us to answer other questions and to do another swipe at presenting what some of our cuts might be as to the council's request regarding our assistance in helping to balance the budget. We've got a slide presentation that we'll go through and begin to tee up here and take you through what we think is a little bit different approach to helping the council segregate costs. And I'll ask our Finance Director, Aaron Anton, to take us through that. And Mike is key ended up right now.
So our first slide should be a quick overview of the timeline, just a high level, just as a reminder of where we're at in the budget process. So we're in November. We've had the public hearings, both on the budget ordinance and the property tax ordinance. Those were the first public hearings. The second public hearings are on the 17th, tomorrow, on both of those topics. And then, as we move forward after those public hearings, we potentially could adopt after the public hearing closes the property tax ordinance. We do need property tax. If that's going to be part of the solution, to have that ordinance in place so that we can submit it to King County by the end of November. And then the budget ordinance can be adopted at the same time. Or if you want to take a little more time to look through all of the other pieces of the budget, then that can be adopted by the last meeting in December. So again, the overview of the budget, the 21-22 biennial budget in total is $235.9 million over the two-year period. And this slide is just a reminder of what it is compared with inflation and some general notations on the overall budget period. So then we looked at the operating costs by department for the 21-22. Just kind of zeroed in on that a little bit more. So those are shown here again as a reminder slide of by department what the operating costs were for the 21-22 period, and then totaling $52.1 million for '21 and $52.7 million in '22, with all of those operating departments shown. So we went through variance explanations when we're comparing the 2020 budget to the 21 budget, and that variance of $3.7 million, and what those major drivers were. So police, parks and facilities. And then the next slide, public works. So there's just a reminder slide on those items. And that brought us to, this is a new illustration that we're looking at those by department look. And it's an illustration comparing those same overall numbers. So the two-year period is $105 million for operating costs for that two-year period. And then of that $105 million, it's breaking it out into these four different buckets. So the first bucket is police services. So that two-year number for police services, $18 million rounded. Fire services, $16 million. And then the third area was the fee or revenue recovered area. So these would be things like building permits, municipal court fines, grants, all of those items that are covering specific fee-recoverable activities. So that's $14 million of that piece. And then the remaining piece is what I'll call "other" for now, the $57 million. And then we wanted to look a little bit further on what composed that "other" bucket, because we had some pretty good definition around the first three, and not a lot of targeted variances that we could look into those as far as service-related areas. A lot of these are heavily solid year-to-year. So in the "other" bucket, we looked at breaking that down into the labor component and the non-labor component. So the labor piece of that "other" is about $32 million for the two-year period. And then what I'll call the "non-labor" or the "other other," is $25 million. And so that's the other contracts. Supplies would come into that number. So for buying de-icer or stockpiling for a winter storm event, for example, that would be in other non-labor as we're stockpiling those resources, as well as contracted landscape maintenance, all of those other contracts that are not direct city labor, but there are other types of services that are being performed out of that. So that $25 million then becomes the area that there may be a little bit more discretion is another way to see that if we're looking at taking further cuts from the operating expense line. So then we looked at this as compared to our structural balance conversation. And so that's where the next slide goes to, here's our, it's the same operating cost illustration that we had before when we're illustrating out the structural balance over the 21-22 period. So this is again, the operating revenues, $91.6 over the biennium, $105 million of the operating expenses. And then by year, it shows you in '21 and '22, the $6.9 million and the $6.3 million for a total gap of $13.2 million over that period. So then the question becomes, how do we address that structural gap? And so one of the ways that was talked about was through some further expense reductions. And so I think the city manager's going to go into this in a little further detail on different proposals that he has included here. So I'll kick it back to you, Dave.
Thank you, Aaron. The council engaged in dialogue with us in our last meeting and asked if there weren't some additional recommendations we could make in the way of program reductions to help bring the budget gap down so there was less of a gap to fill. And we have done that. Whether the council feels it's adequate or not is another course and story here, and we can discuss that in further detail. But what we've done here is, between different departments, primarily parks and facilities and in public works, we've identified reductions and a few delays in hiring with a new position and a current staff position that would bring us to a 2.4 additional recommendation for reductions in 2021 and 1.9 in 2022. And they have some particular areas tied to those. I've got both Anjali and Jeff, Public Works Director, on standby to answer any specific questions. But at this point in the game, and I've had a number of very detailed questions asked, and my response is, we'll try to provide as much detail as we can. But as we've gotten more granular with the questions, my feeling is that we are way, way down the stream here trying to deal with the big policy decisions. And the more time and effort that is spent at a granular level, you'll never make up for everything. We should have started that process months ago, back when we first teed this up in August. But now, what I'm doing is asking departments in specifics and/or in larger areas, what kind of a recommendation can they make? So in the area of public works, I'll give you a highlight, and then I'll come back over both of them. And then I'll ask Jeff to talk about some of the areas in public works, because he's more familiar with those. And then I'll ask Anjali to speak about areas in parks and as a separate area, facilities. In the public works area, it's divided into a number of maintenance, administrative, on-call contracts. And then some of it is divided up into pavement restoration areas. And we looked at all of that to try to come up with reductions where we didn't think our pavement management index would be too compromised by doing a cutback over the next two to four years. But Jeff, if you're on the line?
Thank you, city manager. This is Jeff Elikich, Public Works Director. As Dave indicated here on the slide, we can adjust back, if you will, our pavement management program. One of the nice things that City Samamish has been able to afford is a robust overlay program and to the tune of having a condition rating or a PCI currently at an 83. The target in the future sound from the counties and the resource agencies is a 70 or better. So when there are tough times, such as we are under at this point in time, cutting back on the pavement program, when you have such a high PCI, is something that the city can afford to do at this point in time. So that accounts for $1 million that is got shown there per year. And then on the other side, the $500,000 shown there are various items dealing with street landscaping that we can make adjustments to in terms of cutting back. While we have a beautiful city, a lot of times, city councils will make adjustments in the areas where landscape maintenance or deferred maintenance can occur. And so one of the areas that we were looking at here, between on-call contracts, traffic signal, replacement upgrades, and landscaping and so forth, we estimate roughly $500,000 annually could be turned back, so to speak. That's all I have at this time.
Okay. We have for year 2021 identified approximately $1.5 million in public works area. And then Anjali, if you'd like to get on the line and identify some of the parks cutbacks that we're recommending.
Sure. Good evening, city council. Can you hear me all right? Yes, this is Anjali Meyer. So for parks and facilities, starting with facilities, we are recommending some of the repair and maintenance projects can be pushed out to the next budget cycle. And that accounts for about $400,000 over both '21 and '22. We also have in the proposal a capital replacement plan under professional services. And the allowance we have is about $200,000. And that's really for us to go and put together a plan where we know, you know, when do you need to change the roof on, say, Central Washington? Or when do you need to go and repair something? So we had this in the proposal, but, you know, we've come so many years without a capital replacement plan. We can do it two years out. The other thing with the facilities, repair and maintenance projects, there have been some projects that we are currently working on that have slowed down due to COVID. So we have only one staff in facilities that works on these projects. So we think that, you know, the delay will likely happen anyway because we may not be able to get to all of them. So that's the $600,000 we're proposing a reduction in facilities. Moving over to parks maintenance, we are recommending hiring seasonal workers, and they need vehicles. But the next line is, we are proposing holding off on backfilling some of the permanent positions for maintenance workers just until, you know, '21, because we may not open up, we may not have all our events in '21. We may not have rentals where our maintenance folks need to go and prep our fields or clean up picnic shelters between rentals. So with that, we could delay backfilling two out of the three vacancies that we currently have in maintenance worker positions. Their vehicles can be made available for the additional seasonals that we will hire. So the total savings there would be $105,000 for the two new vehicles and $200,000 for backfilling two of the vacancies in '21. And then the Arts Commission has wanted to do an arts strategic plan. Most cities have one. It just helps them plan where the art goes, what the sources of funding are, what the public process might be. It's something they've wanted to do for a while. And '21 would be a good year to tackle that because if we have reduced events, our recreation staff, who are the staff liaisons with the Arts Commission, would have capacity to take this on. But again, it is a possible 50K savings. So we've put that out there as well. And finally, we are showing a 100K reduction for event cancellations because we don't think we'll really end up having any major events until at least the Fourth of July. So right now, what we're showing, the 100K savings, is if we didn't do any of our winter, spring, and summer events in 2021. So all of this counts for about $1.05 million in savings over '21 and '22. That's all I have, Dave.
All right. Thank you, Anjali. What I wanted to note here in 2021 is some of our reduction recommendations are higher due to COVID and slowing things down a bit. We don't have the vision to look forward to 2022, so we're going to make the assumption that we've got a vaccine. COVID relinquishes its grip and that some of the event cancellations would now be carried on, and we can move forward with some of the delay in the backfills. Some of those delays you see that we're recommending here, we've held backfilling those positions for a number of reasons. COVID has been a part of that. So right now, you'll see a total recommendation of 2.42 and 1.91 for a total of 4.33. That also included, Mike, you'll have to recall for me, the personnel cost. Oh, that's right. It's right in here in the slide. We combined them. $109,000 for the administrative director position. That's been in the budget, but we can delay hiring that. I'm still trying to work on the reorganization. And we'll put that position on hold for six months. And then the new management analyst, which would be a part of our overall risk management and support for social, for human services and HR. We can hold that off. What you don't see on here is, right now, is the reduction of the police officers. I put that back in the budget and given that back to the council. You know it's there. But I'm keeping that decision as a decision in whole for the council to decide on. As I went back, look at your priorities. I don't want to reserp what your priorities are, and we'll take your direction as you perhaps will give us that direction this evening, or at least by tomorrow at the latest. Back to Aaron.
So in summary, taking into consideration those proposed reductions, $4.3 million across the biennium. Then the net gap, structural gap over the two years becomes $8.9 million. And then the question becomes one of those three areas or a combination thereof to either raise revenue from property tax. There's also been discussion about utility tax, further cut expenses beyond that. Don't add the police. We just mentioned that. The police officer positions. And any use of one-time fund balance for this structural. So those are kind of the general three areas for council to consider in resolving the particular gap within the 21-22 budget biennium.
So again, council, what we've done is tried to separate some of this into buckets because you've got your Samamish Police Department is a contract with the King County Sheriff's Office, and that pretty well stands alone. The increases are not in that budget. It's the existing budget and our inter-local agreement. And we have our agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue as to our proportional share. And that, too, has been set aside. Those budgetary decisions done. And then recapping, we went back and we looked at a bucket that had more restricted expenses and restricted revenues, and where that balances out. And as Aaron described, the final bucket, the fourth bucket, where we had labor and non-labor cost. So that as you're making these cuts, they're a little more segregated. Hopefully, it's helpful to the public to see it this way. And you're still down to some of the tough decisions as to how we move forward and fill in the gap. It's not unusual for the city to be facing this. They've dealt with the budget in this fashion before of using existing balance. And then, which gets into, there's a balanced budget, but words can be misleading. It's if you use your existing fund balance, you're deficit budgeting. And then if you don't spend into that, you're not deficit spending. This is getting really close on your expenses and your revenue. And that's why we made the recommendation to start increasing your revenues. I know it's been a topic of discussion when revenues were still exceeding expenses. So I didn't think it was out of line to propose it here as you're crossing that line. But again, those are policy decisions for the council. So Mayor, at this point, I turn it back over to you so that we can answer any other questions or assist in the dialogue, revisit what some of the taxing structures look like, or if that's not palatable, where we might go from here, and looking for direction from the council. Thank you.
Okay, council, I'm going to start with round robins. But seeing that we have got Councilmember Ross, we will start with him. And we will go round robin from there. Councilmember Ross.
Sorry about that. First of all, we've been talking about how we're going into the ninth inning with no real good solution, and we're running out of time. But let me just backtrack a little bit. In the August strategy meeting that we talked budget, we asked the city manager to come up with a structurally balanced budget where the revenues coming in were not less than the expenses. On October 13, the city manager came back with a deficit. In particular, there's a total structural gap of $16.6 million. They made a decision to put in 5.7, which the council hasn't approved yet, of bank capacity. That left $10.9 million gap. Of that $10.9 million structural gap, $3.4 million was for the design for the firehouse. And I'd agree that would be a one-time expenditure that we can draw from funds. But that still leaves 7 million that was left on the 10-13 report as insufficient. And that represented the street overlay program. None of us on the council would agree that the street overlay program is not a recurring or is not a recurring or a one-time cost. It is recurring every year historically and going forward. So we need to have that in our budget. We do need to maintain our streets and we need to maintain it every biennium at about a seven-plus million dollars going forward and on a recurring basis. So taking that out as a one-time expenditure and funding that with reserves is not appropriate to close the structural gap. So we've been harping on that structural gap since 10-13. And I really appreciate the way Erin laid out. If we go back to Slide 10. I believe it's Slide 10. Okay, so on Slide 10, I heard the city manager, when we broke out the 57 million, which is really the target environment, the other first three boxes are very, very hard to vary. But we have some detail underlying the 57 million. And I heard from the comments from the city manager, or maybe it was Erin presenting it, I don't know which. I didn't have the voice recognition. But quickly, the discussion shifted to non-labor as the area to work. I think the whole 57 million needs to be worked because part of the labor is headcount that's not hired yet. I heard some delays, but I didn't have any commitments of doing without. We have over a dozen heads that are not in place. So we don't, that's certainly an opportunity to reduce expenses if we can look at the needs and look at his history. We've been operating about 17 people under since even since the Kohani annexation in January 2016. We've been operating well under our budgeted headcount plan. And I think really what I need help on is what has fallen apart? What have we not done? What is the risk inherent in the last three to four years when we were underwriting headcount? So I'm not convinced, but you can tell me, within that 57 million, where are the cuts? And it shouldn't just be in the non-labor section as a focus area. On Slide 11. Okay, so the 13.2 structural deficit, I think the council still needs to weigh in on one-time funding from the reserves for the fire design. So that's another 3.4 million. It's assumed in this chart that the council agrees. So we should formally agree that we will fund the design for the firehouse with one-time reserve funding. Then, in fact, that would leave us 13.2 structural deficit to work. I think that's, so with that, I just wanted to get to that point. So I guess what we do, we do as a council need to decide if the 3.4 million for the design is one-time funding and then we can move on and focus on the 13.2 million remaining of the structural deficit. Are we all in concurrence and we need to make a motion on that or?
Well, not at a work session, really.
Is?
Yeah, so, but we can certainly give direction in that. It would be, it would be nice to give. Deputy Mayor, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
It's a special meeting. There's no reason we cannot vote and make a motion.
Oh, is it, is it a special meeting? Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. It's not a work session. So yes, sorry. I was thinking it was work session. So yes, you can do a motion.
Okay, I make the motion that we fund the 3.4 million one-time design cost for the firehouses out of reserves.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to speak to your motion?
I think I spoke to it. It would, if we make, if we approve that motion, then this chart represents our current position for discussion.
Okay. All right. Is there any discussion? Okay. All right, then let's, let's take the vote on that. So all those in favor of having the money go, the 3.4 go for the firehouse funding come out of reserves? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Excellent. We got something done. That's perfect. Okay, Councilmember Ross, you're on a roll. Keep going.
I will defer to other council members.
Okay. All right, so then we're going to continue on, on our next, next one up is Councilmember Stewart.
Excellent. So I would like to dig a little deeper into what Councilmember Ross touched on, which is, I appreciate from what you showed, it looks like Parks was basically delaying backfilling two vacant positions. And you mentioned delaying two other positions. That's four. But if you look at the October actuals for 2020, we're 17.5 headcount under the budgeted. And that doesn't even include the additional headcount that you're proposing to add in 2021. And then the additional again in 2022. So I think we need to understand more in terms of those open, the 17.5 plus the, is it three that you're adding in 2021 and another one in 2022? Is that correct?
Those adds are correct, but I'm having Chris double-check on the headcount numbers.
Okay, I just pulled it, the report was just sent today and I pulled it up and it was showing total headcount of 120.75, if I recall correctly, versus the one, whatever it was, 37 or 138 point whatever. But anyway, it's, it's.
We have 141.5 right now.
Okay, so the October actual report incorrect?
Well, Chris and Erin are discussing it right now. Please, let's wait a second.
Hi Pam, this is Chris. You're looking at the grand total, which includes seasonals. We normally look at the FTEs, which is the first line. So we have 114.75 at the end of October and the budget is 131.25.
Okay, so hold on, let me get to that page and let's, let's walk it through.
It's Page 23.
And for the, right, and for the people following along at home who don't get to see what we do. So the, I'm sorry, what page was it again? Shoot, I think I have it shot there.
It's on Page 23.
Okay, thanks, sorry. I'm just, there we go. So I'm seeing that right now we're showing for full-time employees plus the individual contracts, a total of 120.75, right?
Right.
And then the budgeted is 137.25. So that's 16 and a half, I think, if I do really quick math.
Okay, I'll believe your math. I don't have my calculator with me.
All right, it's 137.25 minus 120.75, doesn't matter, 16 and a half, 17 and a half. It's a lot, right? Let's call it 15. And then in 2021, you're discussing adding three more. So we're in the neighborhood of 15 to 20 headcount. And again, this is seasonal, this is contracts, whatnot. So I think what we need to understand, and Chris, I think you just touched on it, in the budget, there are six seasonal employees that we currently don't have on staff right now that we will need at some point. Totally get that. They're not all year. I'm assuming the budget is just for the part that they need to be. So that accounts for six of them. But we need to understand, do we need all six of them? Are any of those seasonals that would be for the events that we think are going to happen? That's what I think we're looking for. And then again, if you look at the FTE count, there's a large number there. So I think that's what Councilmember Ross was getting at. And I, I think, you know, if the city manager needs a motion for us to ask for that, I think I'd like to see a deeper dive on all of those open headcounts and which ones we need and exactly when we need them. And if any more can be delayed and what those budget savings would look like. And I think Councilmember Ross went so far as to say, maybe they're not even delayed, maybe they're eliminated. I don't know, but I think we need to look at all of that because you only touched on four of those openings. And there are a lot more openings there that I think would be potentially a fairly large number when you add in the salary plus benefit costs.
In response to your question, I've got Angelie on the line to talk about the seasonal workers. Why don't we start there? Angelie?
Okay. So hold on, I'm sorry, just really quickly, Mr. City Manager, can we get a number that we're starting with so that we can kind of tick off how many we're going to go through? So are we looking at the, the, I'm sorry, there's an echo going on there.
You just started with the seasonal, so let's have Angelie discuss the seasonal and then that'll take it out of the way, then we can go to the other full-time equivalents.
So is it 137.25 is the total number of budgeted? Is that correct for 2020?
If Chris is giving me the nod, yes, because you're including seasonal. Otherwise, it's 131.
Okay. Got it. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, so this is Angelie. We wouldn't have our seasonal positions filled right now. They are typically filled between March and October for parks maintenance and then for park planning and recreation. And our restoration interns, they are all three and four month summer interns.
Okay.
For June, July, and August.
And in the budget, they're only for that, whatever it is, six or seven months there?
That's correct.
Okay. That seems reasonable. Okay, so that's six. What else do we have? Because again, if we look at those numbers, 137.25 compared to 120.75.
So you have six parks maintenance seasonal. You have two restoration seasonals that work with a volunteer coordinator. You have one park planning intern. And then you have one recreation intern.
And how did you direct those folks this year with COVID and address your other park planning projects or restoration projects?
Right, so this year we did bring in the one restoration intern. Our volunteer coordinator is actually on medical leave. So Dave gave us permission to hire the restoration intern. We did not hire recreation interns. We did bring in a park planning intern because we lost a parks project manager. And I also moved into the acting director position earlier this year. And so we were really, I was overseeing park planning previously. So we brought in an intern to support the team.
Excellent. Thank you, Angelie. So if I do my math correctly, so that's 10 of the 16 and a half. So that just leaves six and a half for the 2020 budget. And then there were three more adds, right? So that's nine more to understand. Because those all sound like things that we should plan for if we cancel things. I'm assuming you guys will delay, but we should plan for all of those.
Well, there are recreational programming and events that we had planned for, but those didn't go off. So personnel were directed to assist more with restoration. And I gave authorization to bring on the part timers for that summer period to be able to keep up in the pace.
Got it. And I'm looking forward, so I'm saying that of that gap, right, the 137.25 compared to the 120.75, Angelie just accounted for 10 of them, which is great. So that leaves six more plus the three adds that you want to add in 2021.
Okay, well, I don't want you to be misled by her giving a thorough review on there. But Chris, on there, we don't count our intern in those types of positions, right?
No, we don't. The interns are not listed here. The six individual contracts are limited-term employees. And I can't remember exactly who they are right now.
I don't remember.
And the FTE count, that's, when you say there are 17 vacancies, it's not the same position. It varies. Positions are not held open typically for a long time, except the ones Dave has decided to hold open. So that's a revolving number.
Yeah, it's.
Understood, Chris. And that's why I am directing this to the city manager in terms of what is currently open right now, that we should discuss whether or not they should be filled or can they be delayed.
Well, I'll have to have some assistance with staff because I don't have a listing of everybody that's open right here handy. But one of them is the deputy city manager, held that open. The next one is the administrative services director, and I'm trying to go down the line here. Then there are five maintenance workers, two in public works, three in parks. And we've kept those open, repeating what I've said before. Those have been kept open as we try to use the part timers in addressing COVID. We had some language issues that we're dealing with and we've got labor negotiations on. So we tried to hold off. But as staff has come to me, those positions now switch over to be at a parks, get lent over to public works during storm season. And so I've directed public works to look at snowplow contracting and contracting with some other worker suppliers so that if we have flooding and we need extra labor and we have those people, those positions not filled, then we've got some contracts that we can refer to because we will need the manpower. We don't have a cost on that.
Okay, so should we make a motion then to ask the city manager to come back tomorrow with the detailed so that we can true up these numbers with what is budgeted for 2020, what the gaps are? And then what the adds are for 2021 and the add for 2022? And understand what the current vacancies are so that we can understand which ones really need to be filled and which ones can further be delayed? Or as Councilmember Ross suggested, possibly even eliminated.
I think the direction was pretty clear. If the council wants to make a motion, they can. We have it.
I just made a motion and Councilmember Richi seconded it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second discussion.
I have discussion. This is Jason.
Okay.
Is there a clear understanding of what's being asked in Councilmember Stewart's motion by staff? That can take the form of Councilmember Stewart repeating her motion succinctly or Councilmember, City Manager can give a nod and call it good, either way.
I'll, I'll repeat it and then make sure the city manager, because I want to look at total headcount, not just the FTEs. But we often bounce back and forth between FTEs, LTEs, contractors, seasonal employees, whatnot. I just would like to have one set of numbers and if you can detail out what exactly those are as we can look at, that would be great. And then, and then we can have that discussion. Does that, does that make sense?
What date did you want that list as of? The number that you're looking at in the FMR, that is people that were paid in October. So we could have had people who started in November that are not part of this list.
I would assume that it has, I would assume that for the city manager, it would have to be based on what we have today because we're not asking for anyone to be fired. We're asking what are the gaps as of now?
Okay, we'll provide that for you tomorrow.
Okay, we have some questions that are in the chat box. First would be Councilmember Train, followed by Councilmember Ross.
Point of order.
Okay, what's your point?
We had a motion and a second. Do we need to withdraw that motion? Or do we need to go ahead and vote on it, one of the other, right?
But we still have to have a discussion.
I have a question to Pam Stewart about the motion, if I may.
Withdrawn.
Thank you, Councilmember Ritchie. Pam, are we, are we in this, okay, I'm concerned about the seasonal employees is the big thing. Are we trying to, is there a reason to? Are we trying to, is there a reason to eliminate the seasonal positions?
I have not suggested eliminating anything yet. I'm merely asking for the data so that we can understand what these gaps are, and if we were to cut something, what would that mean?
Yeah, thank you very much.
And so I'm not recommending any cuts at this moment.
Thank you, I'm done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then we have a question from Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, although I would be also interested in that information. I don't support the motion, and I'll tell you why. We have been splitting hairs on the details. The city manager professes, don't get into my details. I know how to run the business. And so I think this is counterproductive to continuously work these details. I think we need to get more to a targeted approach, and I would have a much different emotion that would give clear direction and action to the city manager and team. But it's not pertinent to this motion. So I would say I don't support it, because I think a broader motion would be in play that I would be happy to raise after this.
I don't think it hurts to have the data, though, and it shouldn't be a hard set of numbers to get, so that we can, whatever your emotion might be.
My motion would require a lot of work, work that is required. And like I said earlier in my statements, they have known since August, we've been requesting a structurally balanced budget. So they'll, I want them focused on the right actions, rather than thinking up more detail at this point. It may be part of the solution I'm going to propose, but it's, I would like to at least maybe hold off on the motions, and maybe we can raise it later if my motion's insufficient for the purposes of what we're trying to accomplish.
If Councilmember Ritchie will go along, I'm happy to table my motion until we hear your motion, Councilmember Ross.
Happy to withdraw.
I do have a couple more questions, if I may. Angelie, you talked about a $400,000 cut on some maintenance changes, and I was curious what those were, because I know the maintenance and operations centers need a lot of work. And I was curious what that $400,000 cut that you were proposing was.
Sure. So that is for repairing the apron at the fire station 81. And I believe there was also some money to redo the tiling at City Hall in the lobby area, as well as painting the Beaver Lake Lodge. So the MOC comes under capital. This is what I think you referred to previously as quasi-capital, but they come under operating because they're maintenance.
Got it. And why is the fire station apron separate from the other 3.4 million fire station? Just curious.
Right, that, because it's purely a repair to the apron of Fire Station 81, whereas what we are looking at for Fire Stations 82 and 83 is a remodel or a potential rebuild. And the 3.5 million that's being quoted right now is an allowance. I did want to clarify that with council. We have not completed a feasibility to know if we can indeed renovate them, or if we would, you know, if we meet a trigger of exceeding 30% of structural changes in the proposed renovations, we would have to go in for a rebuild. So we will have more information on that early next year, once we complete a feasibility.
Great. And then just to clarify, on the $1.5 million savings in public works for each year, you listed out what looked like a one-year savings for 2021. But is that the same numbers for, it happened to be the same numbers for 2022. Is that money that we're spending in both years, or is it different things that would be getting cut for 2022?
It's a duplication in the next year.
I will, I'm sorry, what was that?
It's a duplication of what's in the next year.
So we're spending $2 million on the pavement overlay in Kohani? One million per year? Because you only singled out Kohani in terms of what we would not do pavement overlay.
It's a million dollars for both years. It's 500,001 segment and another, 500,000 in another segment, or split a different way, it's 250 each. Either way, it's a million dollars. And then there's another portion of the budget that added to about 1.2, which is additional overlays in other areas.
Other areas, okay. I just, it singled out, it singled out Kohani, and I just was curious if there were other areas. Good to know. And then...
We'll get you a more specific record of that.
Okay. And then I don't know if this is the right time to talk about it, but I've had some questions out about the police increases in terms of the SRO, and we got the new schedule today. Thank you, Aaron, for sending that. But I'm still struggling to get the numbers to add up, because I think we talked about potentially being able to delay some of those new officers, because we have the SROs covering. And I'm still not getting the same numbers adding up. If I look at the officers, each officer is about 214,000 a year fully loaded. And so if we delayed the two officers by nine months, that seems like that would be more than 210,000. And then if we add a sergeant, that's 253,000 per year. So if we have 253,000 per year plus the two officers, that only adds up to 681,000 a year. But I think the actual requested increase was like 1.3 million. So I'm struggling with where that additional, you know, 600 and some thousand comes from.
Okay. Pam, I'm going to put the police questions to the end as soon as we finish working on what we're working on now, and give others a chance to ask questions. But I do want to point you to, on the 2nd of November, we have a current employee vacancy list that was sent out. So go back and look at that and see if that's sufficient to your needs, rather than having to have them send out another one.
I will look at that. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we've got Councilmember Trine. Do you have input or questions?
I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Deputy Mayor, you're next.
First, I mean, I certainly appreciate the city manager and staff going back and attempting to find places where we can help close this structural gap. I am keenly interested in what Councilmember Ross's motion is, because he focused in on the non-labor farms and his interest in that. So I'm just kind of curious as to what his motion will be and where we go from there. I would love to get the slide deck. Those slides would be really helpful in advance. That way, we can kind of be more critical thinkers. So if we can get that slide deck sent to us even right now, that might be helpful. Because I keep popping out of this to look at all the screenshots I just took of the slides.
Oh, I think staff put out the slide pack. We were making it today. So you'll get it. We just put it together this afternoon. But I wanted to take up one issue. This is directed to Councilman Ross. I've checked with staff, and I was listening very carefully, and I take the position that we've not gotten direction from council as a body to bring back a budget that is structurally balanced. I know I heard that from you. There was discussion, but I'll go back and listen to the tapes and everything if I need to. But I didn't hear that. And when my discussions with staff, we didn't hear "structurally balanced," because that means that revenues exceed or meet expenses. So I apologize if it's an oversight, but I think it was language issues that we were looking back of how to get to a structurally balanced budget, because the council had not done that in the past. So I just wanted to clarify. We did not neglect to follow the council's direction. It's just maybe a semantics issue for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, next I have got Councilmember Gamblin, followed by Councilmember Ritchie.
Yeah, I'm going to defer for the moment if I could. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Yep, just one quick question regarding the structural, structural balance, or whatever. I mean, I don't know, using terms that are, have different meaning to different people. I don't know. I guess my question to the city manager, to the staff, and Aaron, with an overarching thank you for doing what you've done to this point, is what you're proposing, without the slide deck as Deputy Mayor, you know, has spoken to, is what you're proposing with these cuts still requiring a taking of the 1%? And if so, how much?
Yes, we were still recommending the full bank capacity and the 1%, and you still have a gap. And the only way to get that gap closed is to give us direction on, to further cut into the budget, and we'll go back and look, but I want council direction to do that. And if it impacts service levels, we'll tell you where it impacts service levels. It will impact certainly going forward, but if it's reductions from what we're already doing, we will do that.
Okay, so what I'm, from the position I hold here, I'm, you know, temporarily, obviously, I'm trying to understand how the budget doesn't have any COVID dollars in it, or COVID, unless I'm missing something, in terms of spending dollars or expected to spend dollars on PPE or COVID expenses over the next year. I believe that should be in the budget. Frankly, I would be willing to consider a tax increase just for that alone, given where we are. I'm concerned that we have cut costs, and yet we still need to take the bank capacity and the 1%. I'm not sure I understand how that could be, unless I'm missing something, I guess I don't understand. But I'll just wait there until I hear Councilmember Ross's motion, and we'll see where we are after that. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for asking that question. On the COVID expenses, we've put out the majority of what we think, or could it be COVID expenses, the big stuff, buying more laptops, upgrading systems, trying to take care of fixing things around here with the Sneeze shields and all of that sort of thing. There isn't some big expense that's looming out there if COVID continues. We've got a lot of PPE, a lot of sanitation supplies. We continue to address that issue. I continue to ask staff to make sure we've got plenty, just in case there was a rise, and they tell me they've been doing that. So the big surprise is that, council is surprised that we don't have COVID expenses in here. It was perhaps, and I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, we had earmarked maybe $500,000. We didn't spend close to $500,000 on that. And we still have revenues that will be reimbursed to us. So I didn't see it as a necessity to budget items that we could otherwise come up with and burden the operational budget. That was the rationale, because we've not counted in the revenue that'll be coming in from COVID reimbursement from the Treasury. So on both sides, we're not counting that at all.
Okay, we're back to Councilmember Ross. Councilmember Ross? I think you're on mute.
I keep trying to hit the mute button, and we're, oh, now it does. Okay. I've been, I'd like to shorten tonight's evening so that staff has a lot of work to do, in my view. Number one is, we keep going through the details and arguing and trying to justify point by point. It's not guaranteeing us where we need to be. And I think, I think the city manager, actually in his comments, does show his experience in the budget process. In particular, is addressing the risk of further reductions, and what does that mean to us? And so what I would like us to give clear direction, we have a 13.2 million structural gap, operating gap. We found 4.3 million. I'd like to find recommendations, and the city manager's already represented to me personally that they already have the priority list. So stuff on the lower end of the priority of each department could add up to 13.2 million. I'd like the city manager to come back with 13.2 million dollars of cuts, look at the risk of each of those cuts, then we can have a fruitful and informed discussion on how many of those risks do we want to fund with revenue increases? Let's get it, let's get it. Thank you. And so that's my motion. I heard a second. I think that will enable the staff to immediately work the 13.2 million and come back with those, and we can evaluate whether we increase taxes.
Okay, who was the second?
Abby Jason.
Okay. Discussion on the motion on the floor? Yes, council member, and I don't know who that was. Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, so a possible amendment for Councilmember Ross's motion is, at the same time that the city manager is bringing us the expense reductions for that 13 million, would it also be possible for him to then, in the same document, show what our possible revenue sources are and the amounts of those different revenue sources that are available to us at this point? So that when we look at the expenses and make decisions on where we want to be, I assume we're not going to close the entire $13 million gap on expenses. So if we have also the revenue sources available to us at this, at that point, we can then have a complete equation where we can then either decide to balance the budget with expense reductions and revenue increases, or we can decide to use expense reductions, revenue increases, and some application of our reserves. So again, that would allow us to make a complete decision and finish a decision at that point, rather than go another round. So that would be an amendment if Councilmember Ross would work with that.
Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that amendment. That's Kent Trine.
Okay, we have, okay, so I've got a clarification that is needed from the city manager.
So to be clear, you've asked for us to find 13.2 million dollars to structurally balance the budget through expenditure reductions or cuts of the current operational budget, and at the same time, bring back possible revenue sources and options. With the proposal that we have shown you this evening, with sort of dividing our costs into buckets, the fourth bucket with labor and non-labor that Mike has just put back up on the board, there's $57 million there. 13.2 million of that is just over 23% of that. Just want to be clear. That's what we'll do.
Point of order. I mean, we're looking for comments from council, and for clarifications, fine. I think you correctly stated the motion that I stated, which is come up with options of 13.2 million cuts and identify the risks or the level of service changes necessary to accomplish that. The amendment on the floor from Councilmember Gamblin is to come up with tax sources. So now we're talking about the amendment, right? And I'll wait my turn to speak on it.
That is correct. We have a question in the chat box from question Deputy Mayor.
Ooh, I think there's people ahead of me, so maybe I'm wrong.
I'm in there.
Yeah, Chris, I see Kent, I see Pam, Chris, and then me. Unless I'm wrong.
I'm on the main motion, so I have to wait.
They're on the main motion. Is anybody else that is on?
Okay.
I guess I'm next then, after Pam, right?
On the main motion.
Mine's on the amendment.
But this, we are currently not on the main motion. We are currently on the motion made.
Mine's on the amendment.
Yes.
I'd like to comment on the amendment.
Okay, well, Chris is in there before me, so I'm gonna let him go first.
Okay. I, I think it defeats the purpose of the, the main motion, that is, come to us with that risk, look at 13.2 million, with, then we can look at that list and size how much of a, a remaining gap. We may, we may say, yes, let's, let's take those cuts, or we may say, no, we have to fund some of those, and that will size the amount of tax increases. Then we, as a council, then will determine if we want to approve revenue sources to fill that gap, or, or possibly address that later and use funds. There's certain cost, definitely combinations to deal with it, but I do not support the amendment for the reason that I want them to come, focus entirely on the cuts. I think trying to divvy out taxes, again, assumes that we're gonna approve tax increases, and that's not the assumption. It's a risk, a risk and statement of work evaluation of getting to us balanced without taxes, and then we will have taxes as part of the discussion with that information in front of us. So, I'm, for that reason, I don't support the amendment.
And Deputy Mayor, did you have a comment on the amendment?
I did, yes, thank you. Likewise, I don't support the amendment, because I think when we start talking about revenue sources, we've already had some discussion about revenue sources, and I think we're already, we've already opened a public hearing and start talking about other revenue sources, other than what's already been discussed, would not be fair to our constituents at this late juncture. So, I, we may not find all those cuts in the main motion, but I think to ask for additional revenue gives me indigestion as far as our constituents.
And then I've got Councilmember Ritchie.
I believe Councilmember Stewart and, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ross and Deputy Mayor Malchow have accurately reflected my sentiment. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm going to support the motion, because I, I also think that, in general, the, the main motion, I think the, the whole thing is a lot to be asking for and trying to, when we're supposed to be trying to finalize the budget. So, I, I just think it's, it's the wrong time to be doing a deep dive into something a day before we're supposed to be finalizing it. This is something that probably should have been done two weeks ago. So, I will, I will be supporting the, I'll be supporting the amendment. Anybody else have any, any comments? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, and actually, Mike, you better do a real call, because I, I can't tell when.
Mayor Moran?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Malchow?
Nay.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Nay.
Councilmember Ross?
Nay.
Councilmember Stewart?
Nay.
Councilmember Trine?
Aye.
Okay, that's a four-three. So, we will not be doing revenue. So, we are back to the original motion. And Councilmember Ross, can I have you state your original motion?
Okay. The motion is for the city manager to return 13 point million dollars of expense cuts in detail, and the risk associated with, or document the reduced level of service if appropriate.
Okay, and I'm going back in the chat box here. I know we had Councilmember Stewart.
No, no, no.
Councilmember Trine first, I think.
Councilmember, no, 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 no. Okay, you guys, you're gonna have to help me here, because they're all mixed up. So, Councilmember Trine.
Thank you. My question's for Chris Ross, Councilmember Ross, just to help me understand what the, the idea then is to take, you're asking the city manager to go and look at the budget, and everything that is a, that the council has established as a priority would stay, and that he would then look at the stuff that is kind of at the bottom of the priority list, and, and then begin taking off the items at the bottom of the priority list, and as he moves up to the top of the priority list, he at some point is gonna reach 13.2 million dollars worth of cuts. At that point, he's gonna do a, if I understand this right, he would then do a risk assessment on, on those cuts, and bring that forward to us, and we're asking him to do this by tomorrow, I assume. And then, and then at that point, we would then tomorrow be looking at the risks, and then if we wanted to fund those items that have been cut, then we would be looking at additional revenue sources to balance the budget. Is that what you're asking us to approve by passing this motion?
That could be, that could be the outcome. And I'm respectful of all the feedback I've been getting from council members and the city manager, that we're getting in too much of the details and telling him how to run his business. So, this is an approach that allows us to, the city manager and staff to prioritize their budget within a balanced, structural balanced method, position, and then we can look at those risks with eyes wide open and see, well, okay, that is important, or we need to fund that. Then we can shift to a revenue discussion if necessary.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Ross. I, I like your approach. I, I do want to make sure, though, I do feel like we've had, I know we've submitted a lot of questions over the last several weeks, and I'm not sure that they've all been completely addressed. So, I would just like to throw in there that, for the city manager, that as he's doing this assessment, I think it would be great if he could address the areas that have the biggest increases. Councilmember Ross, as you laid out when you did a variance from the, the 1920 actuals to the 2021 budget, there are some areas that had some very large increases. So, I, I would like to see any of those areas that had, you know, anything over a, you know, a 15% increase, at least that we get a nod from the city manager as to why something had to increase by that much. So, to your point where we have the, here's what we're cutting and what those risks might be, I would also like to see where we're increasing by, you know, 15% or more, what the justification for that increase would be, if, if that isn't addressed in the cuts that the city manager proposes. Because I do have some concerns in some areas where we're increasing things by 25, 50, and more percent, and I just think we need to look at that prior to raising taxes. So, I don't know if, if that needs to be an amendment, or if you feel like that is in the spirit of the main motion there.
Yeah, go ahead, you can speak. I don't even know.
I'm not sure how that information is, maybe it's necessary for you to make your decisions, but it, it sounds like a whole nother layer of work. If it's obvious, we'll make a note of it. Otherwise, I like a motion, because we're gonna do a hell of a turnaround here in less than 24 hours, and I think that at this point, we have answered all the questions pretty significantly, and we could sit here for days dreaming up more questions. And its relevancy at this point on what we're gonna be cutting into, because we're gonna cut into meat and bone, I don't see the point.
All right, then I will make a motion on two specific areas. One motion would be that I'd like to see that the budget updated with corrections. So, I, I went back and looked at the report on the headcount, and the, the double counting of the emergency manager is still there. So, we have a contract that we're paying for, for the emergency manager, and we're still counting headcount for the emergency manager. I haven't seen that update in the budget, so I'd like to see that updated budget.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it is. Chris has got that information, and documentation is being updated, but it has been eliminated in the headcount. He's over in professional services.
Pam, there's a new budget attached for tomorrow's packet for the November 17th meeting, and the emergency manager position has been eliminated.
Okay, thank you. Then, the other one I'd like to see is, I still haven't seen an explanation or an answer to the legal. Our legal fees were less than a million dollars in 2019. They've more than doubled in 2020, and they're now staying at that more than doubled rate going forward. That's a huge increase. It's a 1.1 million dollars a year. That's a fairly substantial chunk of this, and I'd like to understand the details on that.
Okay, we've taken note of that, and
Okay.
we've got some updated legal numbers. We don't have them right here, but I just reviewed them, and I had the departments pick up actual to actual and actual to budget. So, we'll have those. But doing, just to note, when you're doing actuals to budget, it's, it's a misleading, it's a tool, but it's, it's not used for making your budgets.
I appreciate that. I think it's a good tool for us to use before we make decisions about raising taxes, so, thank you.
Okay, Pam, are you done with comments?
I am, thank you, Mayor.
All right, then, I'm gonna comment. I am going to, one, I, I love this idea. I think that it's a great idea. I just think that it's way too late. I don't think that staff can do a good job at this in 24 hours. I don't think that we can do a good job with the information in 24 hours. I don't think it's fair to our residents who don't know that we're taking this change in how we're doing this from today to tomorrow. I, so I will be voting against this for the fact that, one, I think it's great, but I think it's just a few weeks too late. So, that's my input, for what it's worth. Okay, and did anybody else have more comments on this?
Yeah, Karen, I think I'm in a long line of people with comments.
Okay, well, it's hard to tell who is on this line and who was for the amendment, they're all mixed up. Okay, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I appreciate where Councilmember Ross is, is going with this, and I think it's almost an essential exercise for us as far as transparency with our constituents, because it allows us to make educated decisions on how much we're willing to take as far as a tax increase in order to close that structural gap. I am not under the impression that we may actually close the entire gap, but we won't know if we can unless we know what's on the table to be cut by doing so. So, I will be supporting the motion.
Okay, next, I'm gonna just go down here, and if you don't have anything to say, just, just say fine. Councilmember Ritchie?
Thank you. I'm hearing, speaking to the motion specifically, and kind of the pushback we're hearing from some staff and some councilmembers. I, I come from a position of, with all due respect to everyone that has a different opinion, I believe we have an obligation to ask questions about the budget. I believe we have an obligation not to take the proposed budget at face value, and I believe we have more than enough time on our calendar to do this the right way, in a fully flushed-out way. I don't believe we need to be in a rush, and I believe if we are not prepared to support the budget and have all of our questions answered, then I believe that we should consider a, a satisfactory budget, too. But I believe that what has been proposed by Councilmember Ross in his, in his motion, that I do support, or that I intend to vote for, to me, makes sense, inasmuch as it gets us further along that path. If those questions can't be answered prior to the meeting tomorrow, that's okay. That's not a bad thing. I would not want to continue on with the process of approving a budget unless we get those questions answered in a way that we can, if not get to seven, at least feel like we have all been able to get our questions answered in a way that is, is appropriate, or is at least, in a common sense way, fulfills our obligations from a fiduciary standpoint as far as councilmembers. We're being asked to raise taxes significantly in this budget, and I believe that what Councilmember Ross's proposal, or his motion does, is it says, if we don't do everything else, if we haven't cut these things and looked at the risk reward, look at what the possibilities are, if we don't play that out fully, then we may not want to raise taxes. We may want to raise taxes, but let's at least pursue the option of looking at what those potential budget cuts could be in a way that lays it all on the table for us as councilmembers and our constituents. And if we don't have time to do that, because staff is already overloaded, I appreciate that, we've asked a lot of them, that's what we do. That's their job. We ask questions, we try to figure these things out. That's okay. Tomorrow is not a drop dead date. We can work through these things over time and kind of better understanding over time. So, I don't want to feel like we are not allowed to ask questions, or we're not supposed to ask questions. We are, and we do not have a clocking, a tick, I'm sorry, a ticking clock behind us, inasmuch as we're putting one on us unnecessarily so. We have time to get this right, and I appreciate Councilmember Ross's motion as an attempt to help get us there.
Okay, Councilmember Ritchie, I completely agree, so I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I agree with the motion that was on the floor, however, I don't believe that it can be done in a timeframe of 24 hours and it be done in a thoughtful process. So, I'd like to make a motion that, that we give it maybe next week and have to come back in a week. It's Thanksgiving week, I understand, but, sorry.
Mayor, if I can, point of order, I believe that runs against what the Finance Chair Anton says would be our statutory regulation, statutory deadline for getting a proposed tax increase. Is that accurate?
No, no.
And, and in November.
Yeah, so the property tax deadline is the end of November, if you are looking for property tax to be part of your solution. So, we do need to know what, what city, the city would like to levy in the way of property taxes.
I appreciate that. Mayor, would that mean tabling the budget conversation that's currently scheduled for tomorrow?
No, no, I'd say we still come back tomorrow, but they may not have all of the answers and stuff that we are asking till the following week.
Is that Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday, our regular meeting night.
24th.
Second motion.
We got a motion on the floor, so it has to be an amendment.
So, it's, it's an amendment.
Amendment, excuse me. Thank you, Malchow.
Okay, is there anybody who has, oops?
I have a question on, on this.
Okay.
If I may, Mayor. I guess I'm a little confused, so I want to make sure staff has time to do what we've asked, but I guess I'm confused, what would the budget conversation tomorrow night be without this information that would be different from tonight's discussion and last Tuesdays and last Mondays? and last Mondays?
Well, tomorrow we have the public hearings.
Okay, can we, are we able to extend the public hearing then out to, so that this information can be part of that public hearing then?
Yeah, we can extend, or we can close the public hearing. We can do either one.
I would only be in favor of pushing this out a week if we can extend the public hearing, because I feel like this information should be part of the public hearing for our constituents.
Wouldn't we decide that tomorrow night?
I think we need to decide that now, because I'm not voting in favor of this unless we can extend the public hearing.
So is that amendment on an amendment?
Unless the mayor wants to just bundle it all into one.
It doesn't matter one way or the other, so yes, we can extend the public hearing, it doesn't matter. Any other, does anybody else have any other comments? Okay, so let's, let's vote on the amendment. And I'll...
Can you restate?
Okay, who, who is it?
I just have to restate the amendment.
Okay, the amendment is that it'll come back next Tuesday, which is a meeting that we were not planning on having, but to give them more time to thoughtfully go through and to try to come back with taking out $13 million rather than having to hurry and rush through and trying to do it. They will come back with what they can tomorrow, but I, to have them have to hurry and have it done in 24 hours, they're probably not gonna be able to thoughtfully do that.
Okay, and as part of that, to keep the public hearing open?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of doing that, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now back to the original motion. Do we need any more discussion on the original motion? Okay.
Just for clarity's sake, please, this is Jason. Can we just, and I'm sorry to ask this, I, we've had an emotion, an amendment, an amendment, and there's been a lot of talk. Can we just restate the motion, please, for my brain? Thank you.
As amended.
Okay, so Councilmember Ross, would you please state the motion as amended?
The city manager and staff will come back with $13.2 million worth lowest priority cuts with the risk associated with those cuts and/or level of service reductions as appropriate during the Tuesday 24th special meeting, with a public hearing extended to that time. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so what would we like to do from here, then, if you, if we want them to come back with that portion of the budget? Deputy Mayor, did you have a question, or did you have an idea?
No, I'm trying to pull back up the agenda, that's all I can do is do that.
Yep, that's all we had, was the discussion tonight on the budget.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, does anybody, does everybody want to adjourn?
I have something for the order queue.
Got a motion and a second, so.
Okay, motion on the floor. All those in favor of adjourn. Pardon? I didn't hear.
I will, I will withdraw my motion so that the people in the queue can ask their questions.
Okay, questions?
I just had a good of the order, or the good of the order, but we can adjourn, but if you want, I just wanted to give some praise out to the council. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I have the floor first?
You can have the floor.
Thank you. So first of all, I wanted to just send out a congratulations to some people. So one would be Pam Stewart for becoming the growth, or still, as the Growth Management Planning Commission member, so Pam will be representing Sammamish in that role. So congratulations, Pam, on that position. Also, on the Joint Recommendations Committee, Chris Ross has been reappointed to that position as a member, so congratulations to Chris Ross. On the King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee, Karen Moran has become, has continued to be a member on that committee, so congratulations, Karen. On the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee, Chris Ross has been appointed as that member, so thank you, Chris, for representing the city of Sammamish. The Emergency Manager Advisory Committee, as an alternate, is Karen Moran, so I wanted to just thank her for her continued commitment to emergency management and for representing the city. And then last but not least, of course, since I sit as the alternate on the pick committee, I just wanted to congratulate Chrissy Malchow, who, again this year, was unanimous, 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 that word. Everyone voted for you, Christie, that's what I'm trying to say. But she will be the pick chair for this next year. So Christie, thank you very much for serving the city of Sammamish in the role as the Public Issues Committee Chair. I really appreciate that. I just wanted to let the citizens know that and staff know that this council's got some members on this council that are working very hard in other areas of the region and the county to push forward change that would impact the city of Sammamish. So I appreciate the sacrifices that you're making, and thank you for being a good example for me and for the other councilmembers. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Trine. Okay, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 All right, we will see you tomorrow.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.